Welcome back to the Point of Order Podcast, an inside look at California politics in the state legislature. I am your host, Assemblyman Josh Hoover, and excited to be joined again today by our Capitol Director Teresa Trujillo. Welcome back.
Hi, Josh.
How are you?
I'm good.
So how are you feeling about, so today what we're going to be doing, and I'll just lay it out there at the start, is we're going to recap a special session in the vote that happened yesterday in the Assembly and kind of the context around that. And then also, I believe it was Monday, September 30th was the deadline for the governor to sign or veto all of the bills for this legislative cycle. And so we're going to be recapping some of those bills as well. But how are you feeling in general about kind of session being quote unquote over?
Yeah, well, I was more excited about session being over before they called a special session.
Yeah, exactly.
So there's that.
Literally the day after we're done, we're starting again.
Yeah, so that's like a little bit frustrating because I think we had a special session last year on gas prices too. And gas prices haven't come down, but there's that. So we're doing another gas price special session because I don't know, the solution last year didn't work.
This time it'll work.
Of course it's going to work.
Absolutely. No, yeah, that's actually interesting you bring that up. Yeah, because last time it was all about price gouging, right? And we passed this legislation that was like going to solve this by transparency and showing all the price gouging. And since that point, every report that we've seen shown there's the oil companies are actually losing money. There's no price gouging happening.
Yeah.
I mean, it's and but but they they want to find a boogeyman for why, you know, gas prices in California are higher than they are anywhere else. That doesn't have anything to do with their policies.
Exactly.
So it's just like, it's frustrating once again. In fact, we'll get into it, but that's again, kind of what we're dealing with this time around too.
Yeah, I always find it funny how apparently the oil companies are only price gouging in California.
Oh, yeah, only Californians.
It's only in California where they're price gouging. I, as you know, just came back from Tennessee and I will say that gas was all under $3 a gallon. It was arranged from like 250 to like the, I think the highest price I saw was 299. So I'm like, oh my gosh, it's so nice to like.
It's so amazing.
Fill up your tank and it's like 250 a gallon. When you come back here, it's $5 a gallon.
It's 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 so amazing. Yeah, and so frustrating at the same time because you know, you have to go back home and like pay $5 a gallon again.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's really hurting people like it's really hurting. I know my constituents, we live in a district where a lot of people commute, you know, to work and drive, obviously drive their kids around to sports and all that good stuff. And it really hurts. I mean, I, yeah, every year or every month, I should say, I feel like I go over my allotted budget for gas. Like every month, I feel like I can never get it right because it's just, it's always more than we think it's going to be.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I live really close to where I work.
That's smart. Yeah, that's really smart, actually.
I don't like commuting for other reasons, but the side benefit is I don't have to pay as much for gas.
Exactly. I think it's really interesting, this whole gouging thing, because it's like the Governor Newsom really kind of started using it with gas in California. Like, oh, it's not my policies or the fact that, you know, we we don't, you know, want to, we've basically stated, we want to shut down oil production.
I know.
But it's the gouging. And then at the national level, we've seen from the Harris ticket, like talking about, you know, grocery prices aren't a lot because of inflation. It's because they're gouging you. They're trying to take your money.
But we already know the profit margins like at 1.5% for the groceries.
What? I mean, I just don't, yeah. It's like, it's just trying to deflect from the real issue, you know?
Exactly.
And find a different person to blame, and it's really frustrating.
And unfortunately, some people do buy into that argument, which I am always like stunned by.
Well, the problem with the argument, especially on the grocery issue, right? It's like if they're going to, stores are going to charge what they think that you will pay, obviously. But in a market with competition, like you're not going to be able to do that. Like Rayleigh's can't go gouge you if Safeway is offering a better deal. Like, that's kind of the whole point of capitalism, right?
Well, exactly. And now especially with like Target and Walmart, how they're not union and they also offer groceries. It's really cut the margins even more.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's a good point. Like just adding the groceries to the, yeah, yeah. So it's just like, that's, that's kind of the whole point of competition.
Yeah.
Is that that doesn't typically happen because, you know, you, you, in theory, have a number of other options as a consumer. So not to mention Amazon, which by the way, I I like was going out of town recently and I forgot to buy dog food. I had told my wife I was going to buy dog food before I left and I forgot. And I I got on Amazon and I was able to get it delivered to my house in like four hours or something. I was like, because I was like going to be late for my flight. So I was like, oh, my God, I hope this works. And sure enough, it was on the doorstep before they eat at night.
So. Oh, my gosh, you're so nice.
I know.
You're so nice.
Well, I was like, I gotta come through here. I can't, I can't make her buy the dog food. But like you have those options too, right? It's like you've got Amazon and online shopping that has made things a lot more affordable too.
Yeah, for sure.
But that was pretty wild. The things you can get delivered now within four hours is pretty crazy, by the way.
I know, it really is. We're like, we just ordered that.
Which, by the way, if any of my folks that work in any of my cities are listening, I'm supposed to say, do not buy online. Okay, because it, and this is true, actually, it is bad for city tax revenue. Because they get way less when you buy online. You know, your, your local city gets way less when you buy online than when you buy in a store. So I do try to encourage people to shop local.
I definitely do. I definitely try to support local businesses all the time.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm anti-Amazon.
And Amazon, if you're listening, no, I'm kidding.
My, my husband still purchases from Amazon, but I do not.
Well, I think it depends on your, like, I would say we buy some things on Amazon, but the vast majority, we buy like, you know, from stores like Target or Costco or whatever.
Yeah.
So in the community, but yeah, I mean, some things it's like, you know, I don't know, like I bought an electric pencil sharpener the other day. I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, some things are hard to find, yeah, outside of Amazon, which is just so, made it so easy.
It has made it very easy. It has made it very easy.
Yeah.
But it is, it's tough when your city's not getting that revenue. It actually is kind of hurting the local.
Yeah, for sure.
Kind of like law enforcement funding and all that stuff. So I was like, all right, I need to, I need to go buy local for sure.
Yeah.
Not to mention the business owners. I would much rather help a local business owner than a.
Yeah, and the employees.
Right?
Yeah.
And the employees for sure. So let's just dive into it. So I don't want to keep you for too long today, but I did want to let people know. And, and like this, in the fall, we've actually had some different guests on. So we're doing obviously not the weekly podcast that we normally do since legislature's out of session. We've been doing, you know, having some other interesting guests on. So last episode was Josh Lowenthal, our first Democratic legislator on the podcast. We had a great conversation with him. So if you do want to listen to that, go check out episode, episode 48. That was, that was really fun. I don't know if you heard any of that.
I haven't yet, but I need to listen.
Yeah, it was good. Like, we talked a lot about, I don't know, just like the parties and how we all can work together, but also like just internally, how we operate as caucuses, like Republican, Democrat. And I asked him how he like, you know, how they govern a 63-member caucus, because that just sounds like a nightmare. And he, he, and it was really, and then we talked a lot about social media and smartphones and stuff too. So it was a really interesting conversation, but we're, we're trying to mix it up a bit in the fall. But we're taking a break from that this week to just talk about special session, just because that's what is going on this week. And so as we already mentioned, kind of at the top, Governor Newsom called the legislature back in a special session to pass this price spike proposal, I guess essentially it is AB 1X, which is going to be, it's a bill that would essentially require oil company or petroleum companies to have a stockpile in California, to stockpile petroleum, have a reserve in California to help reduce the impact of future price spikes. When inventory gets, you know, low or when we have supply challenges, then in theory, you know, the governor's thought processes that having this stockpile would help reduce price spikes during those times. The problem with that proposal and the reason I voted no on it, and actually we'll talk about it, but a number of the Democrats in the Assembly either voted no or abstained on it.
Yeah.
Is because the, our energy, the Energy Commission in California actually has studied this and says that the more likely outcome is you're going to raise prices across the board, because you're actually pulling fuel out of the market.
Yeah.
When you have demand for that fuel, you're, you're setting it aside.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you're hoping that it'll, you know, offset some future price spike. But the reality is, is that it's going to be very expensive to actually stockpile this stuff. It's going to require a bunch of infrastructure and tanks and additional storage. And yeah, so I don't know. I don't know if you've been, had any thoughts on the, the conversation.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, any economist will tell you that if you reduce supply and the demand stays steady, it's going to increase prices. And, you know, I like to remind people that it doesn't, you know, increasing prices on gasoline for your vehicle increases prices across the board. I mean, that's what helps increase prices for our groceries. I mean, they're, they're being brought in by trucks. So it's like gasoline increases, gasoline prices going up increases prices, you know, across the board.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, and it's like, how are, so you're on one hand, you're demonizing an industry that you're saying that you're going to be basically out of here by 2035. And yet, how are they going to do, how are they going to have the infrastructure? So you want them to invest in all this new infrastructure, which by the way, would cost a ton of money, which would also increase prices. But you're going to invest in infrastructure for a, an industry that you want to shut down.
Yeah.
So I'm like, it's so confusing to me in like every way. It doesn't make sense. It defies logic.
It does. And that was an interesting part of the debate yesterday, actually, on the floor is that there's a provision in the bill that also actually limits additional infrastructure. Like from being built because of the impact it could have on surrounding communities or whatever. So you're asking them to stockpile petroleum, but you don't want them to build any, any additional infrastructure. And then Assembly, Assembly Republican Leader Gallagher put forward an amendment to the bill that would have waived SEQA, basically our environmental kind of law that slows down infrastructure projects so that we can build the storage quicker, so that we can implement this quicker. And they voted against that.
They did.
So it's just like, you know, it's just, yeah, it's one of those scenarios where like everyone seems to acknowledge this isn't going to help.
Yeah.
And yet we're pushing forward because the governor wants us to.
Yeah, I know.
Pretty frustrating. I wanted to read a, a, let's see. Oh, I guess the bill number, I said it was AB 1X. It's AB 12X. This, this is because it's the second special session.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, these numbers, I usually think the numbers get confusing in regular session. I feel like in special session, they get really weird.
I, I knew that you said it wrong, but I didn't know what was right, so I went.
Well, there we go.
I just love that slide.
But Assemblywoman Lucy Rivas, who's part of the Democratic Caucus, also very, you know, she's the, she's very, you know, generally supports stuff like this.
Yeah.
I would say.
Yeah, she, she's an environmentalist for sure, I would say.
Hundred percent, yeah. She put out a statement that said, "I have a long history of supporting policies that benefit the environment. I also support preventing gasoline price spikes and increasing our reserves. However, I'm not convinced the bill that was voted on today comes without risks, some of which could be potentially catastrophic for low-income residents." While I, essentially price increases, right? "While I appreciate the commitments made by the administration during the assembly hearing process, this legislation cedes significant authority to state agencies and away from the legislature and limits our ability to ensure any decisions on gas prices are genuinely in the best interest of our constituents. I remain concerned that this legislation could jeopardize worker safety. A lot of the building trades are actually opposed to this right now."
They are.
"They feel like this would be a problem in that regard and result in potential refinery closures and increased gas prices in California. There are significant concerns I feel need to be, need to be more guardrails to ensure that this legislation will not increase gas prices. Despite the author's honorable intentions, I hope the Senate will address these issues as they'll move forward. But for these reasons, I cannot support this legislation." I mean, that's pretty damning, right?
It is.
In my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it's going to be improved upon to where we could support it. Honestly, I just think the whole concept is not going to work. It's unworkable in this state.
I don't think it gets fixed in a major way.
Yeah.
I do, you know, it will now move to the Senate, who's meeting in maybe a couple of weeks, I think.
Yeah, I think the 11th.
Or no, the 11th. Yeah, yeah. So like, yeah, maybe a little over a week to debate this and possibly amend it.
Yeah.
Which means we're going to need to come back, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, I'm so excited about that.
October, I'm hearing like 18th or 19th, so.
Yeah. But yeah, it's like, it's, you know, we have a dwindling supply here in the state of California. We're not like authorizing any new, you know, oil permits or whatever. And it's like, we used to have dozens of refineries. Now we have like, I think, nine. And so what do you, and we have a special blend in the state of California. And it's like, the thing that gets lost here is like not caring about low-income people. I mean, at the end of the day, they can't afford the EVs. And, you know, the gas taxes are aggressive. And it's like, I don't understand, like you, you're supposed to be the party and champion of low income. And you do so many things that increase prices in the state. It's like our policies increase prices in the state all the time. And I, I just, it's like, we just don't, I guess we just don't care about low-income people.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's really tough because, you know, especially for, you know, a lot of people who have to live so far away from their jobs to just afford a home or afford rent, especially if they work in a major city, for example. Then they're driving the longest distances, right? They're paying the most in gas tax. That's why it's regressive, right? And, and it's really sad. It's, it's sad that, you know, honestly, the theme on this to me is the same exact one on the gouging special session. It's they want to blame anything but their own policies for the, the reason that Californians pay more for gas and more in gas taxes, by the way, than anyone else in the entire country. And, and in a lot of cases, by a lot, right? And so, you know, for example, you know, it's so refreshing because I was sitting on the floor during this debate yesterday and just writing some notes on some of the debate that was going on. And I'm just thinking to myself, like, so we need this because there's times of the year where inventory becomes reduced and supply challenges are created, even though demand remains, you know, constant. But why, why is that? Like, it's not because they don't want to produce more petroleum. It's because our policies, our stated goal in this state of this governor and of the legislature in a lot of cases has been to shut down local oil production across the board. We, the governor just signed a bill like a week ago that basically caps off wells in Los Angeles and, you know, ends oil production. You know, some of the oil production remaining in California. And he has stated publicly on multiple occasions that he wants this industry to go away.
Yeah.
And so, so, but the frustrating part about that, it's like, okay, fine, you believe that, that's, that's your choice. But the demand is still there.
The demand is still there.
People are still have to buy gas for their car. And so what we're doing essentially in California is we're shutting down local oil production, where it's, by the way, the cleanest it is anywhere in the world.
Yep.
And we're substituting it for additional foreign imported oil that is much dirtier. It's processed in a much dirtier way. And then it's shipped across the, you know, the, the ocean.
The globe.
Right? To come to California and we're using the same amount. And so it's just like, it's so incredibly frustrating to me when you look at the dynamics of it.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so I, I'm just, I'm kind of at a loss for words on, on that in terms of, I mean, literally sitting on the floor, just like shaking my head a little bit on this.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's not this reserve that, that is really the solution. It's actually, you know, allowing local energy production.
Yeah, it is. But I mean, I know a lot of Californians, you know, definitely support that policy. And it's like, you know, for environmental reasons and we all want a clean environment, but we're not ready. We're not, we don't have the infrastructure, you know?
Totally, yeah.
You know, we're not, we're not doing the things to prepare us to shut down, you know, gas, you know, gas vehicles. We're just not doing those things and it costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know, and at the end of the day, we're leaving a lot of Californians behind, those of Californians that just can't afford another way. So, you know.
I totally understand the desire, right? To move off of fossil fuels. I mean, it makes sense, right? Cleaner air obviously is always a good thing. I mean, you know, I'm, I grew up in Central Valley where I developed asthma at a really young age, largely due to the air quality there, right? So I think everyone really cares about that and wants to see that happen. But you also have to consider consumers and their pocketbooks and how quickly we're able to do that transition. Because the reality is like, it's not going to happen overnight.
Yeah, and we need an affordable alternative and we need to care about those people who can't afford to put, you know, gas in their cars and can't afford to buy groceries and those, like, what about those?
Pay their bills.
What about those people?
Yeah, for sure. So that is kind of an overview of what occurred in special session. We actually did pass another bill that I thought was actually a, a good thing, which was essentially expediting the use of ethanol E15.
Yeah.
Essentially 15% ethanol products in our fuel moving forward. I was supportive of that. I think that will actually make some dent in, in the cost of fuel, hopefully for the better. And was, was glad, really glad to see that was actually a Problem Solvers Caucus priority. I'm part of the Problem Solvers Caucus, a bipartisan priority that we've been working on for a long time. So it was really cool to see that come to fruition in this special session.
Yeah, and I believe other states are already doing it too.
Yeah, we're one of the last.
We're behind.
Haven't done it.
Behind the eight ball.
Which is, you know, again, also interesting, but glad to see bipartisan support for that. And hopefully the Senate will finish that one out as well.
Yeah.
We'll see. All right, so let's move on. The deadline before the special session was September 30th for the governor to sign or veto bills. There was a number of interesting ones we kind of pulled out. I will preface this by saying, we're not going to touch on every single bill that happened because there were like, well, actually, I'll read them. I think I have them here somewhere. But there were over a thousand bills this year that were signed or vetoed.
Yeah.
That ended up landing on the governor's desk.
Yeah, I think like 1,400 on his desk and then he signed like 1,100 and something, I think.
Yeah, so Governor. Maybe this isn't the right number, but this Cal Matters just says Governor Newsom cleared his desk of nearly 1,000 bills. I think there were more than that over the course of the year.
I thought it was like 1,400.
Yeah, so, but he vetoed 183 of them, which is a veto rate of 18% after this, that, I guess, since August 31st. So I think that's just in the last month.
Yeah.
The, the ones prior to that, I think there was a few hundred prior to that.
Yeah, because I think he signed one of our bills prior to that too.
So, yeah, okay, so this says 16% of the 1,200 bills passed this year he vetoed.
Okay.
Which is interesting. So it compares to a 15% veto rate in '23 and then similar number in '22. But then if you go back to '21, he only vetoed 8% of the bills. So he's actually, every year, he's progressively getting, you know, vetoing more, more things. So, oh, and the other thing that I'll bring up too on this is, because people ask me this all the time. Well, because we're going to talk about a bill he vetoed that I worked on that I'm, you know, not very happy about, I think was a mistake. And so people have been asking me the question, you know, well, why don't you just overturn his veto? That actually has not happened since 1979.
Yep.
The legislature has the power to override a governor's veto with a majority vote. But has not used that authority in, what it was that, over 40 years or something? So, and, and it's funny because there was any, some, some folks on the other side of the aisle talking in the media the other day, like, because they were asking, would you ever do that? And they were saying like, no, we don't, we don't think that's the right thing to do. So.
Yeah.
I, to me, it's one of those things where I think you got to do it a couple of times, once in a while, just, just to like make it known that you're willing to do it.
Yeah.
If you don't do it for 45 years, it's kind of like, all right, well, this isn't a threat then. There's no threat here. There's no leverage here, right?
Yeah.
The governor just doesn't worry about it. But I think if you pick one or two bills every legislative session, then they'll take it seriously, right? And like, maybe it gives you more leverage in the discussions.
We don't.
It also pisses him off, so that's probably what they want.
That's why they don't want to do it.
But, and, and I'm like cheering for chaos here probably, but, but I, but I legitimately think that other states do this. Like their legislature uses this as a leverage tool, right? With the, they're a co-equal branch of government.
I know.
Stand up for yourself.
We don't, we don't here in the state of California, for sure.
Yeah, so we're just letting the governor run everything.
That's, that's pretty, that's pretty accurate.
But we're going to start with some of the bills that he signed and then we'll, we'll do a few of the bills that he vetoed. Again, not an exhaustive list, but definitely, yeah. So the first one off the top, I have to, you know, talk about because it was my bill. But AB 3216 was so grateful for the governor's support of the Phone Free Schools Act. Obviously, a bill that went through a lot of iterations and debate throughout the year that would require school districts in California over the next year or so to develop policies that limit the use of smartphones during the school day.
Yeah.
This is a growing national trend. It is a trend, it is a policy that actually has been very successful in Europe and other countries like France and UK at getting students more focused, less distracted in the classroom, better mental health outcomes, you know, reductions in bullying and suicide rates, depression rates, anxiety rates. I mean, all of these things that we have seen increase since smartphones became a part of young people's lives over the last decade. And so something that I think is really important for our students and parents. And, yeah, so just really excited. So I don't know if you had any thoughts on it, but.
I mean, I don't know. I, I think my kids are older, they're adults. And so, I mean, they did have cell phones in school, but I don't feel like they were super addicted to them.
Were they like the smartphones or were they like?
I think they were the smartphones. I'm like trying to, I'm trying to think back of.
Because I have like a, like a Nokia in college or high school or whatever.
Yeah.
And it just wasn't the same, right?
It's not the same.
You can text and you can call.
Yeah.
But the, but the, you know, I think we got to stop calling these things like phones.
Yeah, I, I agree with the bill 100% though. I totally am in support because I think that the, the, like, the studies that have been done and they, they bear out that we should not be allowing them to have these smartphones in school or have access to them.
Yeah.
And so, you know, during the school day, it's like, I, I didn't have access to them, you know, and, you know, I was just totally fine.
Yeah.
I, I just don't think it's necessary. And I do think that it's so addictive for these kids.
Yeah.
And they don't know what it is to like not have their smartphone. And I think that it, it really bothers me. I think we've talked about this before on this podcast. I'm just not a huge person on my phone. I, I really try to limit my interaction with the phone and no one else around me does, except my daughter. She's more like me, but I just think it's unhealthy just in general to like, just have, just something that you just are constantly looking and checking and wanting to see who, you know what I mean? I just don't think that that's.
And not engaging in the real world.
Yeah, I just don't think that's, I've like been out to restaurants so many times to where I've seen like young people come in and they're all on their phone.
Yeah.
And I'm just like, that's so weird. And so like, yeah, from a different, coming from a different generation, I just don't like that in general.
Yeah.
And so I feel like this is a good thing just for society, just to like basically like have a time when they're, they can't have their phone.
Right, right.
And maybe that will help, you know, outside of school too, of not wanting to be on the phone all the time. So I think for me, that's my biggest thing. That's why I really like it.
Yeah.
Because I just, I don't like that addiction to the smartphone.
And it is an addiction and, you know, people really do, you know, have to check it. I mean, I, I fall into this trap too sometimes, right? It's interesting, the middle school, one of the, the middle school principal that we had testify in the Senate Education Committee talked about when they implemented this policy in, in my district, how it was incredible to see the social interaction just spike during lunch hour, right? And, and just like see the kids talking to each other. And I mean, it's like a game changer on that front. And I think they have to do that for their own development.
Yeah, I think so.
So it's really good. I mean, I, I know I mentioned this more generally at the top, but the, you know, we're talking like nearly 50% increase in, in, you know, depression and anxiety rates, suicide rates. The, the one statistic that really upset me is that among girls ages 10 to 14, the suicide rate's up 131%. So this, this like new, these new struggles are really impacting girls specifically.
Yeah.
More than anyone else. I mean, boys too, obviously, but that's, I mean, as someone with a daughter, I know you have a daughter, like, it's really, really upsetting. And, yeah, I just think action, more, more needs to be done.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, my daughter is anti-social media.
That's good.
She does, she has nothing.
So my daughter is currently without a phone due to some choices that she made. And I won't go into too much detail on that, but she's having to learn to kind of like just be without a smartphone. And it's. And it's, it's been tough, but she's adjusted to it, you know? And it's just like, I don't know, in a drawer somewhere, like we still have the phone, but like, yeah, she can't use it. And it's, it's been I honestly, it's probably been more inconvenient for me than for her, just because I can't call her. So I'm like, ah, we gotta figure this out.
Yeah, that's so funny.
But, um.
There's actually a Modern Family episode to where they took, they take the fun away from everyone, I think. And they're supposed to like, try to like figure out life without a phone. And I think like Haley ends up getting like super smart.
That's hilarious.
She like suddenly starts getting into like, you know, reading and like nature and everything else because she is without her smartphone. And so it's, it's just kind of funny. And it's not really that far from the.
That's a really funny, I have not, I'm sure my wife's seen that one. I haven't seen that one.
Yeah, it's pretty funny.
She's the Modern Family watcher.
Yeah.
So, but I love Modern Family. That's awesome. I'm gonna have to watch that one.
Yeah, that's funny.
So, yeah, so really grateful on that front. Oh, and I gotta mention just the tweet that got tweeted.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so this, this kind of blew up and was in a lot of national stories because it is part of a national trend.
Yeah.
And Joseph Gordon-Levitt actually tweeted and tagged me and the governor in this tweet about how he's grateful for the Phone Free Schools Act and how digital tech can be an awesome part of a kid's life. But so many apps are designed to be addictive and we need guardrails, which I hundred percent agree with.
Yeah.
But he, he thanked me and, and the governor for our leadership on this. And that was pretty cool, just because I, he's someone that I actually like.
Okay, so, so just, just for the, the, the audience, the viewers. Who is he? Because when you texted that to me, I'm like, I'm like, I know he must be a celebrity.
Oh, so you don't know, okay.
So we looked him up and I do know who he is.
Joseph Gordon-Levitt, actor, he was in, I don't know, he's in The Dark Knight, like, or The Batman Begins movie.
Okay. I know I've seen him, but I didn't watch that.
A bunch of.
He's in a bunch of movies, right?
A bunch of stuff. I don't, I don't have time to be yet, but yeah.
Okay, yeah, he, uh.
He's in, what's that movie, like Inception? Isn't he in that one or something? I don't know.
I did see that movie and I did like it a lot, but I, I don't know. I know I've seen him around a lot, but he's an actor. Cause I, cause I, I'm like, I said it out loud to my husband and he's like way better with like names of celebrities than I am. And so he goes, oh, it's him. And I'm like, oh, I totally know that guy.
Yeah.
I totally know that guy. He's really, yeah, he's a big, he's really big.
Yeah, that was pretty, it was pretty funny. I was a little shocked by that.
Yeah, I love that.
You know, but it was, it was good to see, you know, a lot of people, you know, a lot of good responses to that.
Yeah.
So just a few more bills that the governor signed. AB twenty-three sixteen Gabriel makes California the first state in the nation to prevent public schools from serving food dyes such as like color in the Fruit Loops and the Cheetos and other processed snacks. So the blue, green, yellow, and red additives banned by AB twenty-three sixteen have been linked to hyperactivity, other behavioral issues. This was a bill that I had some concerns on early on in the process because it was a little too broad. I thought it was, I think his goal was to take it out of like the schools, which I actually support. But the initial versions were a little too broad, but I did end up supporting it at the end. And I think it was, it was, the negotiations went well.
Yeah, well, I think he fixed the timeline too for the schools to be able to.
Implementation, there was also concerns with that.
Yeah, because they've already like pre-bought or pre-contracts or whatever.
It, it is interesting if you look at like Fruit Loops in the United States versus like Fruit Loops in the UK. I don't know if you've done this.
No.
They, they're completely different. I mean, they, they, they're not completely different from a, like, they're both cereal, but the, they're, the coloring is completely different. Like the UK's version has like substantially less like attractive coloring. But also it looks more natural. It doesn't look like you're eating like highlighters, you know, which is, you know, something.
I love me some Fruit Loops, I'm not gonna lie. My parents let us eat all of that garbage cereal, but we were all like very skinny too because we were all in, like so many sports. We did, we were so active and, you know, back then you used to play outside. So anyway.
Not just sound video games or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, so it's like, it didn't matter.
Burning off as a kid. I think it gets more problematic as an adult, probably.
Hopefully you get off the Fruit Loops as an adult. Well, I used to be on the Fruit Loops, but I'm not really anymore.
We are not a cereal family at all. Like, we just don't do cereal.
I did cereal every day.
We don't have anything against it, but it's just like not something we've ever.
No, I hear you. Yeah.
We barely have milk in our house.
Yeah, I don't even understand that. I love milk so much. And people think I'm crazy. They're like, you drink milk for dinner? I drink milk for dinner every night.
We buy one of those, what, like quarter gallon milks, right? Two percent or whatever.
Me too.
And actually, usually lactose free because some of our family has a little issue with that. But, and we have almond. We, we drink a ton of almond milk. But we buy one of those quarter gallons of two percent and it usually expires.
Wow, yeah.
Cause it just, I mean, it's cra, we just use so little milk. We use it for cooking.
Yeah. And that's for me. It's just for me because now that my kids are out of the house. Yeah.
Well, anyway, your Fruit Loop in your schools will, will in a few years be without these dyes. And so, yeah, something to beware of. SB nine sixty diverts the gas tax revenues intended for fixing roads to instead convert vehicle lanes into bike and transit lanes.
Yeah.
Yet another one of these bills that I just don't understand.
I don't either.
We have drivers that are paying gas tax for their roads, not for, um, not for other priorities.
Yeah.
That's not to say there's anything wrong with transit or bike lanes, obviously, but, um, yeah, you gotta find other sources of funding for that.
Yeah, but still, yeah, we made a promise to voters about where the gas tax was going and this was not it. And we keep diverting money. And quite frankly, I'm not into the fact of them keep on reducing car lanes for bike lanes when there's still so many more motorists than bicyclists. And it's like, okay, I get what you're doing, but like we talked about early, earlier, it's really a for, or hard to afford to live downtown Sacramento. I'm sorry, to where I could ride my bike to work. It's like, if you are maybe like single and you or you live in an apartment downtown, that's great. But anyone with like a family, you can't, you can't afford to live in Sacramento or, or you might not want to because of like the homeless situation we have here. So it's like, you're, you're taking away my lanes, you're making commute harder for me when I'm forced to basically because of economic reasons to drive into work. You know, it is frustrating. So I'm just, I'm just, it's just like trying to change behavior. And at the end of the day, less people are going, using transit than before, you know, the pandemic, which we've talked about before. So it, it just frustrates me on all fronts.
Yeah. No, it's, it's very frustrating and it's just another, you know, kind of really ties back into the special session too. Like, we pay the highest gas taxes in the nation. We get the least in return for that.
Yep.
So we're paying the most and it's just, it's, yeah, it's very angering.
We're failing.
So certainly SB ten fifty-three bans grocery and certain retail stores from providing plastic bags, distributing, selling plastic bags. I forget what year that starts, but that is going to be probably a pretty noticeable change for consumers. I, you know, I have some concerns with it, especially because just a few years ago, we passed this other law that allows these reusable bags that we're now trying to recycle and all of this. And now we're changing the law again. I think it's, uh, makes it pretty difficult to do business in California.
Yeah. Well, because of the other bill, we like started this whole recycling program in our state. And so those bags were recyclable.
Yeah.
And now we're all of a sudden cutting this bit, so we had this like robust recycling industry that we are no longer going to. I guess we're just gonna just shut it down. And because the last bill they did was stupid. And said that it was gonna reduce plastic waste and it just increased it. And so.
Well, I think that's what was the craziest part of it is that it actually increased the plastic we used last time we did it.
Yeah. And so the, the other thing with this bill is it's going to actually hurt like medium and small size grocers. Because now they can, so, so paper bags are twenty-five percent more.
Yeah.
And for any low income, like if you're on WIC and other, um, other types of programs, they have to offer it for free. So the grocers are actually, yeah, they're gonna be losing money for, for it. So it's a problem there.
That is a problem.
On a, on a, on a side note, I was before the curve. And I, I, I do not use plastic bags. I do reusable bags.
I do reusables too, most of the time.
I'm on, all the time I do, all the time.
I usually have one in my car or something.
Yeah, I have, I have like three or four.
Carry out my tomatoes in my hands, like, you know, like a total crazy person. Cause I, I forgot my bags or, and I, I don't wanna pay ten cents. Like, for some reason, I'm just like, no, absolutely not.
I will not pay ten cents either. It's like, I've been on the bandwagon forever though. I'm like, I'm anti-plastic bag. Like, I don't know, I just.
I don't know. And I think like, a consumer choice, I think that's.
It is a consumer choice, yeah. And I'm, I'm, yeah, I was an, I was an early adopter, as they said.
Yeah, that's good.
As an early adopter, yeah.
Last one on this list, for the signing list, SB eleven seventy-four prohibits local governments from
requiring.
This is a confusing one because like a double negative. But essentially it bans local governments from passing laws requiring voter ID for elections. So this all stems from Huntington Beach, I believe, passed a local ordinance that said our elections, we will require identification to be shown to vote.
Yeah, and voters supported that. That was, that was passed by.
Supported it. And the vast majority of polling that you see supports voter ID. And this entire conversation is always like blown out of proportion, in my opinion, where this is, just, yeah, it is. It's like a very supportable policy. So now in California, you are, local governments are now banned from passing an ordinance like that. And, and, yeah, so that, that is, I, I think it's, it's definite case of government, of overreach by the legislature, in my opinion. I think it's very much an overreach.
Yeah, and just a little bit of context for that. I looked it up and thirty-six states have some type of voter ID.
Yeah.
So we're, we're definitely an outlier. Or, you know, we're one of, you know, a few that, that requires nothing. You know, no type of voter ID at all. So it's not like a crazy, crazy concept to require voter ID. And like the, the excuses they give are completely and totally ridiculous. I mean, as it is, California state law requires you to carry your identification.
All the time.
You're supposed to carry your identification. That is a law.
Yeah.
So.
And, and you ask pretty much anyone and everyone carries it at all times. And, and we're even making it easier, right? We're moving to this like mobile digital wallet where you're gonna have a digital ID on your phone.
That's such a great point.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my gosh, that's so amazing.
It's, it's gonna be like even this, this idea that, oh, it costs money to have, it's like, well, no, this is gonna become so easy to do.
I know.
California is gonna make it easier to do. I think the argument is just kind of going away very quickly.
I love that because everyone has a phone. Everyone has a smartphone. They might not be able to carry their ID.
Discuss that, that everyone, literally everyone has a smartphone.
Gosh.
So I'm actually fine with the digital ID. I just like.
I am too.
It's like, it is not a, a burden to ask someone to show an ID, I think.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. But let's, yeah, I know we're.
Let's dive in. We're running out of time. Dive into the vetoes and we'll close it down.
Yeah, I'm super excited about the vetoes. Let's be honest.
Bills that the governor vetoed. Off the top, I have to mention my legislation, AB twenty-nine oh three.
Yeah.
Which I was very disappointed that he vetoed. That would have simply just required any future spending on homelessness in California to be tracked. The money to be tracked on where it went and also to be measured for its costs or for its outcomes. So, you know, tracking the costs, measuring the outcomes, very simple concept. This came from recommendations of the state auditor, of the auditor we worked, the audit we passed last year that found that we don't know where most of our twenty-four billion taxpayer dollars have gone. We've seen an increase in homelessness over the last five years. It's, we, and the auditor said, we need to track where this money is going. Governor chose to veto that bill. After, by the way, getting it through unanimous bipartisan support, right? Through both houses of the legislature. So disappointing to say the least. But yeah, that was not completely unexpected, unfortunately.
Yeah. It was really frustrating. It's like you do a lot of hard work. I did staff the bills.
Yeah, you did a lot of hard work on this bill.
It was a lot of work.
And, and we, we brought together a really big bipartisan coalition on it. And, you know, the governor signed some other bills and, you know, made some statements about, we already are doing accountability and we've got this covered. And it's just, and this is just too expensive. It's too expensive to do accountability, apparently.
Yeah.
Even though we're willing to spend twenty-four billion dollars, you know, on homelessness.
Yeah.
And, and we're okay if that, those investments aren't being used wisely, but it's too expensive to hold.
They're helping out their friends.
Accountable. Yeah, it's frustrating. So we're gonna continue to work on that and, and see what next steps are moving forward. But it is a bit of a roadblock right now with, with Governor Newsom, so.
Yeah.
AB eighteen forty, he vetoed the bill allowing illegal immigrants to apply for any homeownership assistance program at Cal HFA, the Housing Finance Authority, that will crowd out. Well, I'm just reading this for bitum, but essentially with concerns being that it would crowd out other applicants. That, by the way, for a program that's already not funded, and the last time it was funded, I think the funding lasted for eleven hours when it, when the application process opened. You know, Californians are desperately trying to afford homes and this would have expanded eligibility for those programs to those that are here illegally. Governor did veto that one.
Yeah.
Which I, I was, I voted against the bill, but I thought I was appreciative that he vetoed it.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, there's no money in it. So why are we expanding a program that's already over subscribed?
Yeah, good point, too, yeah.
Like, it doesn't make any sense and there's no money in it.
AB twenty-two eighty-six, requiring human operators and autonomous large trucks. He, he vetoed this. I actually supported his veto on this as well, not because I wanna see autonomous trucks roaming around with no drivers, but in fact, that most of that technology is, is just in testing. It's not even ready yet. But I think it's, you know, I, I was really unhappy with this bill because there was no sunset date in it. There was no end date for when this policy would end. And I felt like that was, that was, we're regulating something we just don't know enough about yet.
Yeah.
To, and, and we're regulating costs on an industry that's currently already dealing with a lot of different costs.
Yeah.
That, that one will be interesting to see, you know, what happens moving forward with that one. Your favorite one though, AB twenty-five thirteen, would have prohibited the sale of gas stoves in California without a warning label. So basically this idea that we're gonna put a warning label on all these gas stoves and the governor vetoed that one.
Yeah, we gotta talk about that. We gotta talk about that. That, just like, that, that bill was gonna make me crazy. And not because obviously it would have changed my life because I have a gas stove, but I know exactly what the intent is. It's a political move. It's like this, it's the beginning of what we always do. It's a slippery slope.
Yeah, you start with the warning labels.
This is the first move is the warning label.
Then you ban the stoves.
Yes, which, which by the way, the warning label, it's nonsense. And that's why the governor vetoed it. Because it is the act of cooking food that creates any type of harm for humans. So whether it is a electric stove or if it's a gas stove.
Yeah.
It creates the same, I don't even know, it's, it's like, it's called something. It's like the same type of emission though.
Right, right, right.
Created no matter if it's gas or electric. So you are, you are being, you're misleading people. And it's, it's actually bad for safety because at the end of the day, what you need to do when you cook is turn on your vent hood. That's what you do. You would turn on your vent hood. That's what takes care of that, whether it's gas or electric. And to act like it's just a gas stove that leads to any type of, it's a politically motivated bill. And in fact, one of the, I thought it was super funny, one of the lobbyists that was trying to talk me into it, I'm like, absolutely not. She had actually taken her, she had converted her electric stove to gas. And then, and then, and then changed it back.
Changed it back?
Yeah, because that was back in the day. And then now there's this whole political movement.
I mean, not a big cook, but we just can't, like, I can't cook on electric.
Everyone likes gas better. And seventy percent, I didn't realize seventy percent of Californians, I think, cook on gas stoves. And we are one of the bigger states that actually uses gas stoves.
I'm sure there's a big coalition of Democrats and Republicans against electric stoves.
My gas stove, don't take away my gas stove. Don't do it. I cook every single day.
Proudly in the Latinas for Gas Stoves Coalition.
I'm in the Cooks for Gas Stoves Coalition.
Yeah, the governor said this static approach falls short in enabling timely updates to labeling content that should align with latest scientific knowledge.
Yeah, yeah. In other words, it's nonsense.
Yeah, yeah.
That's his.
But, uh, yeah, glad to see that get vetoed. He also vetoed SB nine sixty-one, which would require new vehicles sold in California to be equipped with technology that warns drivers when they are speeding. Essentially like your seatbelt notification that beeps at you. It would do that when you go over like ten miles per hour of the speed limit. Just, I, I mean, I'm sorry, this was so ridiculous. And we, I think I even spoke on this on the assembly floor because I was so worked up about it, which I don't do a ton, but
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just really stupid.
I was, the, the, the thing is, is the fact that some of these bills make it to the governor's desk. It, it's just like, it's dumbfounding to me that like all of these people vote for this nonsense. And I, I wanna say to, I'm like, wanna say to them, please tell me that you don't ever drive ten miles per hour over the speed limit. And I was actually reading more about it and the notification that the car. And I was actually reading more about it, and the notification, uh, that the car would do under this bill was, um, beeping, which is, you know, beyond annoying and, and distracting.
Yeah.
And, uh, lights flashing. Lights flashing too, just, just, you know, just for fun.
Good to know.
Yeah, so I'm like, oh my gosh, this is like, this would be like so distracting. And we just, we just passed a bill in the legislature this year that would make it illegal for, um, California consumers to like tamper with any type of these safety things.
Safety features and the cameras.
So this would just cause every person to be in violation of the law, because people would look up ways to like.
Yeah, get around it. They're like, we gotta cut that wire somewhere. That's just not gonna work for me.
And, and then Weider's original proposal, um, uh, he, he actually.
Prohibited.
Well, and it would have even, no exceptions for even law enforcement.
That's crazy.
It was like.
That's crazy.
It was insanity. Like this.
Oh, yeah, the original bill would have required governors on cars to keep them from going ten mile, like, to physically keep them from going ten miles over. That was cra, that actually was opposed by law enforcement.
Well, cuz it, no, no exceptions for law enforcement either.
No, no exceptions, plus you have circumstances where sometimes you need to speed up.
I know, for health and medical emergencies.
What if you're outrunning a wildfire in California? I mean, I don't know. There's a lot of different reasons, uh, that would make sense. But, uh, yeah, he, thankfully, he did amend it, but it was still a terrible bill. And, and Governor was the voice of reason, apparently, on this one.
I will say, this senator wants to run every single aspect of our lives, and I can hardly handle it, like all of his good ideas.
Yeah. Well, the last bill actually was his bill too. So SB ten forty-seven would have regulated AI models, uh, that have actually not even been established yet, the really large, uh, basically safety protocols for large AI models. I, I do think this was cart before the horse a little bit.
Yeah.
That the bill itself even regulated technology that's not even in existence yet. So I do think AI is moving quickly, and it isn't gonna be important to pass some, some, you know,
safeguards.
Reasonable safeguards and, and, um, you know, uh, safe, you know, I guess best practices and, you know, regulations, but, um, I think this jumped way forward beyond where we're at yet, and so the governor did veto that as well. AI will be a topic of conversation a lot over the next few years, especially because it's advancing so quickly.
Yeah.
But I do think that, uh, for, for now, I thought, think this was the right decision.
Yeah.
So we're gonna wrap there and get you out of here. Do you have any final thoughts before I let you go?
Good, yeah.
Well, um, this was fun.
Thanks for having me on.
Glad that, uh, we were able to break this stuff down. Obviously, a lot of other, uh, bills out there that he signed and vetoed. We'll put some links in, uh, some other lists in the, the show notes if people wanna dig a little deeper. Really no announcements this week, other than we're gonna continue having different guests on throughout the rest of the year. Uh, and then we'll be back to our weekly show in January. Beyond that, you can share ideas for future shows. Uh, you can email pointoforderpod@gmail.com. You can listen on Spotify or Apple Podcasts. Watch, subscribe, or follow on YouTube, X, Instagram threads, and Facebook at Point of Order Pod. And follow me, if you would like, on X at Joshua underscore Hoover. Teresa, thanks again for coming on, and we'll see you again next time.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.